Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, welcome back. The board has returned from two board interviews down in the Wheelwright Room, scheduled for 6:40 PM, and then we will resume our regular meeting in about 20 minutes when we return. Next item on the agenda is public comment. However, there's no members of the public here, so we'll jump forward.
You're public.
We do have one proclamation, which I'll read. Constitution Week, which reads the following. "Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, a proclamation in the year of our Lord 2022, Constitution Week, September 17 through September 23, 2022. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Nico Papakostandis, Select Board Chair of the Town of Exeter, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week in the Town of Exeter, and I urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the Town of Exeter to be affixed this 19th day of September of the year of our Lord 2022." Thank you. Next, we have two sets of minutes to review. I'm sure everybody reviewed them in the packet this weekend. I will ask first whether there are any revisions or amendments to the regular Exeter Select Board Meeting Minutes of August 22, 2022. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of August 22, 2022.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? 4-0 with one abstention. Then I would ask if there are any amendments and revisions to the regular meeting minutes of September 6, 2022. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of September 6, 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We do not have any appointments this evening, but regretfully, we have a resignation to consider from Camille Weber, who is the Exeter High School Student Liaison to the Energy, Exeter Energy Committee, who unfortunately is not able to fulfill her duties any longer as student liaison. I want to thank Camille for her work with the Energy Committee and hope to see her back in the future when her schedule permits.
This is a position that the Energy Committee reached out to the high school to find someone, and she did a newsletter at the high school, and she's since moved to Vermont. And we haven't replaced her yet, so if there's a high school student out there that's interested in the Energy Committee, come on down.
Just a quick question. Is there an alternate for that position? Just thinking about student schedules and...
Well, we meet after... We meet after school.
Right.
It's not really an official position. It's not in our description, but no, she didn't find...
I understand what you're asking.
Yes. Sorry. My mic.
Thanks, Paul.
No, we didn't require...
I'm only thinking that with high school students, you know, it's fair enough with adults.
Yep.
I imagine for high school students, it's even more difficult to be as consistent, and so if there was an alternate, they could at least...
Sure.
You know...
Yeah, we'll take two.
Yeah. If it's publicized as a dual position, then it makes it maybe a little bit easier for continuity.
Sure.
I think that's a good point, and I'd go a step further. Can you have two? I mean, it's not like this.
There's no reason not to. We vote on a whole lot of things.
Right.
So, yeah.
So, I mean, I think that way, if you have two, then right, either they could come together, alternate, but you have somebody there that's...
No, I think it would be great. A lot of experience.
Absolutely.
Those who'd be interested.
Yep.
Good suggestion. Thank you. Then I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Camille Weber.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0, and we wish Camille well. We can jump right into our discussion items. We have our town moderator Kate Miller back with us, our town clerk Andy Kohler, and supervisor of the checklist, Vicky Novoychek. Good evening. Come on up.
Thank you. We sort of travel as a team.
Before you start, Karen, thank you all for the wonderful job with voting. I'm sure I'm jumping ahead here, but it went so well, and thank you all.
Well, thank you. I was going to thank all of you for showing up and doing your work, and all the voters for coming. It was a good turnout, and it was nice and steady, no big waves, no completely quiet times.
Yeah, it was wonderful. And I probably just jumped ahead on Nico. Might have followed you.
I was going to say, what a great team you are.
Thank you.
It's okay.
It was good.
Sorry about that.
We can say it more than...
We can say it more than once, and I'm sure we will before you leave again, so...
And we're hoping to see even more voters on November 8, when we have the general election. So, we are going to be staffing up and ready for folks. So, thank you. So, we're back again for kind of a do-over on the conversation about the electronic poll pads, which are a way of checking in voters that is quicker and has some benefits in terms of accuracy of the checklist itself. And we previously recommended that we do a trial for an election in 2023 and rent them. We looked at the cost again, and we looked at how many elections we have coming up, and the cost of renting for one election in a year where we have only one is $9,300. That's just one. So, some years, we have four elections. In 2024, we'll be blessed with... Hi. Oh, get my mouth on the microphone, sorry. In 2024, we'll be blessed with a presidential primary in January, town elections in March, a primary in September, and then the general election in November. The cost of actually purchasing the poll pads is a grand total of $19,400, which is just a little bit over twice the rental cost. So, renting doesn't make a whole lot of sense in terms of the amount of money you put into it for one election to rent, and we certainly wouldn't want to rent for 2024 because there's so many elections there. That would be $37,000, so that's a lot of money. And then we also got some information about what other cities and towns have done, and the fact that there really isn't much of a rental agreement with this. They do provide support and service, and it's a company we work with, with our AccuVote counting machines, and they are excellent and very responsive. But there really isn't a sort of lease agreement, and we looked at what other towns and cities may be renting, and the answer is none. So, there were one or two, Rochester?
Rochester rented them first.
So, they rented them for a year and then went to buying them. Almost all of the communities have just gone straight to purchasing because it makes more economic sense to do that. So, initially, we thought we'd be saving the town, you know, trying something out, you know, maybe we wouldn't want it or whatever. It looks like everybody who's tried it uses it. The people who have bought them have no regrets, from what we can tell. We've done a lot of talking to other communities. So, it seems like it would actually be a financially more prudent move to purchase the poll books for the 2023 year where we have only one election. The poll books for the two thousand twenty-three year where we have only one election gives us a time to get our feet under us, make sure we're all trained up before we get the two thousand twenty-four year that has four elections, so that we'd have the experience of a more efficient, quicker check-in, and we expect more accurate voter checklist, ones that don't need additional corrections to keep them correct. Anything else?
Nope. That's good. Covers it.
So we would propose spending the amount that they have put together on their price sheet, which is nineteen thousand four hundred, which includes the central cradle point, which is the thing to which everything is connected. Just a reminder, all of this stuff is not connected to the Internet, so it creates a special little Intranet that is just specific to the polling place. And then it would be ten poll pads, which should be ample for the amount of folks that we would need to use them, and we would be working on updating the checklist in real time in a paper format with all of the receipts we get from the poll pads as they check people in. So as there are changes, new voters added, the poll books, the paper checklist needs to be updated contemporaneously in the event that there's a power outage or any questions. So there's a dual system, but the voters get checked in much more quickly, fewer lines.
No lines, no waiting.
So you're looking for, you would like to have these purchased for the March two thousand twenty-three?
Yes, and I understand that if, if you approve it, we probably won't have them for the March election because the budget has to be voted on. Is that right?
Well, well, there's a couple of different things that could have. I just wanted to be clear before we have our discussion on how we pay for it.
Yes.
And when we pay for it. But ideally, you would like to have them for the March two thousand twenty-three.
For the March election, yes.
Because obviously, that gets you ready for February two thousand twenty-four, where presumably, unfortunately, you'll have more people.
Yes, it'll be a presidential primary.
Fortunately. We love...
No, 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 I mean unfortunately, in that more people than March, which is also an important election.
Right.
So I guess, Melissa, I might look to you. Obviously, if they're looking for March two thousand twenty-three, then it would have to come from funds that we already have. And I know ARPA funding was, was thrown around at last meeting and has been talked about in our packet, but do we have any other money in the budget for this year that could be used for this?
It's my understanding in discussions with Russ that he would like to have you consider ARPA funding.
Okay.
We did not have a discussion about funding it through this year's budget.
Well, I have a question. This is for the Town Clerk. Going through the budget cycle, don't you usually have a line item that's for ready to purchase new machines when the Secretary of State figures out what they want?
Yes. However, I don't, that's, I, I don't even know. I think it's like twelve hundred dollars.
Oh, I thought it was more.
No. No.
It's more like a place, it's more like a place setting, okay?
You mean like office, like, not office equipment, but equipment? No. Not any that I could...
No, you've been talking about getting new, I don't know if it was the ballot...
We can't do, we can't get any new machines until...
They say...
Until the state says yes. Till the ballot commission votes on something. Yep. Yeah, there are no line items in her budget that just, they're waiting. The only thing that I have in the election, in the elections budget that refers to the AccuVote machine, which is the maintenance, so I have a maintenance line item for that.
Yeah, but this, this isn't maintenance.
And with the purchase of these, we'd have another maintenance line item every year with the purchase of those, so just to be clear, post the original purchase.
I mean, I see the, you know, I see the importance of having these for the March two thousand twenty-three, and obviously, you know, as I alluded to a minute ago, it's a lighter load to get you ready, but, and I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to the ARPA funds, but we've made it clear that for items or initiatives, that should be a budget line item, which I believe this should be, I mean, we had Chief Pullen in our last meeting for tasers, which we felt should be in the budget. I mean, personally speaking, I think ARPA funding should be used for what it was meant for, and this is something that should be a line item and will be a line item moving forward. However, I mean, we can have a discussion because I understand the dire need and the timing, but, but I just don't want to send the wrong message to other. We've asked department heads not to come before us with, with items that should be in the budget, and I just don't, you know, but we've done it before, so precedent's been set, but I think we need to have that discussion.
So can I start? I saw what the potential benefit was. I think we all kind of, during Tuesday's vote, so one thing that just kind of came to mind, our last meeting was literally telling department heads to not do this, so, and not that you are, just, okay, bear with me, sorry, because I'm thinking as, I'm speaking as I'm thinking. So we originally talked about this, about putting it on the March, through the budget process, putting it on the vote for March, and of course, that meant we wouldn't have the polling pads for March. That said, we only have one election next year, right? So we really want to consider buying them for one election year, where if we, and just bear with me, please, because I, I like the idea of these, but I'm trying to do it in a responsible way. So if we put it through the budget process, we could purchase them in the fall, we could use these for deliberatives, correct?
Yes.
As a very small test, but it would be a small test.
That's a good idea.
And then we could use it for March, right? It's just a thought I have, just because we, we have some ARPA funds, but they're dwindling down pretty quickly, and if we have any emergencies, every penny could count, and I, I think our town people kind of like us to go through the process of budget as much as possible. So that's just a thought of mine, to spend all that money and only have one, and I believe, if I remember correctly, training is once, right? In this, in the packet, they'll, they'll train everyone once.
Yes, but don't forget that if anything happens during the course of an election day, they are right there. It's just a phone call away.
My thought is, though, if we, say we decided to use ARPA funds as a scenario, and we get them, and we have training, and then they wait a whole year, and how many of our ballot clerks are going to forget how to use them? It might be better to wait, and that way, it's being reinforced with a few elections in that year. It's just a thought I have.
So if I understood correctly, and I think, and we're on the same page, if we, if we deferred this to a budget line item for two thousand twenty-three, obviously, you would not have them for the March twenty-three elections, but you would, if the budget passes, you would have the machines at some point in two thousand twenty-three. You could do a dry run at deliberative two thousand twenty-four before the presidential primary, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I think that's where I would, I think that's where I would...
You just simplified it for me. Go ahead.
Playing devil's advocate, totally hear you, completely appreciate your fiscal responsibility. Having the polling pads at a primary as the initial welcome to our new polling pads may be complicated because we are talking about party affiliation, what people are registered for. It could be a barrier of entry for people and could be a little challenging. In a March election, so, I mean, granted, we're not going to have them for March, well, if we buy them now, if we could, we would have them ready for March. People would get used to using them. Yes, it's going to be a little bit of time before we use them again, but then we can continue our education, and voters are more familiar with using it, and we don't have to deal with party affiliation and all of that. Just playing devil's advocate as a supervisor.
No, you made a great point. So I'm going to follow up with what, would it cost us to do a second training? My concern is, you're going to go from March to...
Yeah, go ahead. So I am, I, my job has been training, so it's more of a train the trainer. So I have no problem, I mean, Andy and I do our ballot clerk training every time. You've been there, you've seen it happen.
I have, thank you, thank you.
So my understanding is this is be better for a train the trainer because they're dealing with people they know, and then more free of asking questions and, and like, all of that, so...
I didn't want to volunteer you for the job, so thank you very much.
I guess I just volunteered myself.
Thank you. The other thing I just wanted to bring up was, you know, if we're lucky enough to get them for two thousand twenty-three and, and use them for the town election, we also thought about doing a dry run with the public at the town hall, so that the voters could get used to just coming in and what they're expected, you know, what they expect from us, what we expect from them.
Like a mock election.
Like a mock election. I think that's wonderful. Yeah, so that when we get to January, February, we're not, you know, we don't have to call in help and say, you know, we lost our way, and I bet we could even use them during ballot training.
I bet we could.
We absolutely can.
Yeah.
So my concern is that we're likely to have a really big turnout for the presidential primary.
Yeah.
Probably as big as anything. And piloting, you know, maiden voyage, not so much, that worries me, that things could be challenging.
That's legitimate.
Yeah, we think the, the system is, is good and easy to use and all that kind of stuff, but making a change like that, people have been using the paper checklist for how many hundreds of years? And voters are used to it, and it's not that it's going to be hugely different. You'll still see a clerk, you'll have an interaction about, you know, name and ID and all that stuff, but it's, it's going to be different. And our ballot clerks are fabulous, but there will be a little bit of a learning curve. So I'd prefer to have like training wheels for, you know, bicycling all the way to the convenience store instead of just down the driveway one time, so do a town meeting so where we're getting, you know, thousands of people coming in and voting, and, and really get some experience under our belts. So that's my only plea for doing it now as opposed to later, but you have a lot to weigh. So whatever your decision is, you know, we'll, we'll make it work, and I, I think it will be good, it's just a little bit more of a lack of a parachute kind of thing.
Yeah, and my only concern was the training part and the delay, but if they have a, a plan, then I'm not concerned about that.
What's the turnaround time in ordering? So if you, if, if the money is approved whenever it is, what's the turnaround time for ordering them?
We could probably have them by the end of the week.
That quickly? Because I, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure of it, yeah. It's, yeah.
Select Woman Gilman?
Yes, I just had a question, doing your research with other towns and/or states that have used these, did you talk about the hardware, you know, life cycle, I guess?
Yeah, we talked about that at the, the last time we came before you. They, they said that as far as the equipment is concerned, we shouldn't have a problem with that. The only thing that they're going to update would be the software, not the hardware. So, and they're expecting that to be every five or six years, so...
And then my other question is, what does the Secretary of State think of these?
Well, they approved them because it was other towns that are using them.
They actually encouraged them because one of the things, I was going through the four-hundred-and-eighty-three-page manual, the elections manual, and one of the big concerns the Secretary of State has is qualified voters becoming discouraged and not voting. So if there are lines, particularly lines for registration on an election day, or lines to check in, and people don't have time before they have to go to work or whatever, they, you know, they leave. So they actually have in their materials, you know, we recommend you consider using poll pads in order to reduce the likelihood of lines because it seems universal that when these are in place, the amount of time voters have to wait goes way down, and it's because you don't split the alphabet. Every, every pad has all of the alphabet in it, so any voter can go to anybody, any clerk that's available, and, you know, we always see these weird little blips where everything's going smoothly and suddenly there are ten people, you know, in one letter of the alphabet, and this avoids that. So the Secretary of State, while they're, you know, it's not on a billboard, they are encouraging towns to use these because it does help voters do the process more quickly.
I read a lot of that manual, but I must have missed that page.
It's great beach reading.
Oh, you know, what you read on Wednesdays? That was on mine.
You good?
Yeah, I think that's, that's it for me.
Select Woman Rantrioloff?
No, I mean, my personal opinion after the last election, just observation, you see that we're a very heavy A through L community, and, you know...
Yes, we are, I had to scan all of them in.
Right, and so like, just watching the number of people who are standing, waiting while there are empty spaces everywhere else.
Correct.
The sooner we can do this, I think, the better, and I do agree that, you know, kicking this off for such a major election would maybe not be, not only for your staff, but also for voters.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Just knowing the loveliness of voters, that, you know, change can be difficult, and trust in new systems can be complicated, and so I think the sooner we can get people acclimated with a new system, the better, before a presidential primary or election.
It will also give us time to educate the public, not just once, not just twice, but we can even do like, you know, a monthly campaign. It also will assist for voters who may have registered and are unfamiliar with voting in New Hampshire for the first time. We had a lot of new voters, but not new registrations, come to the supervisors' table, which was great because we got to chat with them, but they were already on the checklist. So for them, just to be able to scan their license or give their name as they come in, it, it expedites the system so much faster, it allows them to move along without having to come see the supervisors and then bounce back as well.
Select Woman Cowan?
I, yeah, I mean, I think that the conflict for me is like the process and not wanting to do this through the ARPA funds with also what you're talking about, Vicky. I agree entirely. It would be hard to spring this on primary voters, I think.
Well, and especially coming into a presidential year, it's, we all know it's going to be highly volatile for, don't, I hate using that word, but we know it's going to be contentious. There's going to be a lot of people coming out wanting their votes counted and accurately counted, so...
Which we do all the time anyway.
We do, absolutely, and I just want to say, our ballot clerks were phenomenal on election, our primary on Tuesday. We had amazing records. I'm thrilled pieces, all of you being there all day, thank you, cannot say enough about all of our volunteers.
So before motions considered, I just wanted to weigh in too. Much like Select Woman Cowan, I'm stuck on the process because I truly believe that this should be a line item, and I truly believe, at least myself, that the ARPA fund should be used for other things, non-budgetary line items. However, encouraging people to come and vote, encouraging people to stay and vote, and making the voting process more seamless for our residents, more seamless for our volunteers, is vitally important, particularly in this time where there's so much controversy over election days and voting. You all do a tremendous job, and it's not an easy job, and you're there all day, and fortunately, in our community, we don't have too many problems, but we do once in a while. And so if, when you come to the board and you're, you know, like, like any hard-working department heads that say, "We need this," then obviously you have our attention. Now, Andy, you piqued my interest for a moment when you said that there's so much inventory that you can have them in a week. So that's, or two weeks, or three weeks, but...
I'm going to guess that we could probably have them by the end of the month. I mean, I mean, they are, they are delivering these things to town clerks in Massachusetts left and right. I mean, the whole, almost the whole state is using them now.
So we're not on fire to make a decision right now to have them for March because they're available, and where I'm going with this is just to suggest to the board, before motions made, we're meeting again next week. There's not enough money in the budget for nineteen thousand four hundred dollars. However, if we could task the town manager to scrub the budget, and I know that he wants to use the ARPA funding, that's the recommendation in our packet, my suggestion, and of course, you know, anyone can make a motion tonight, but if perhaps we could ask the town manager to scrub the budget, if he can find some money to offset the nineteen thousand four hundred, then we're not taking that much from ARPA. Or if he could provide, you know, some alternatives, instead of using all of the ARPA funds, or ARPA funds for the entire nineteen thousand four hundred.
Absolutely, we can look at it this week and get back to...
I'll open that for discussion with the board.
No, I would, I agree with that. That's where I was going to go with this. And we meet next Monday. So I would like to, if we could get that on the agenda for next Monday, if that's the route we all decide to go. But it sounds to me like we're all excited about using them. It's funding them that we're a little hung up on.
So I guess without a motion being made, I'm going to, I'm going to just go by the conversation that we all would like you to have these for March two thousand twenty-three in the ideal world. But if we could have another week or so for the town manager, I just, we as a board, and I know I'm, I'm stuck on our spending every meeting, but we as a board have made it clear to other department heads that if it's a line item, it's a line item. However, you know, this is a little bit different given, you know, given the circumstances, given the fact we want people to come out and vote, we want them to be able to vote seamlessly, and we want you to be able to do your jobs.
If everybody on our checklist was to come, we'd be impacting almost twelve thousand voters. And I think that is something to keep in mind. It's not a one-person experience. It's multiple people, multiple households, et cetera.
It's important, for sure, for sure.
Also, some of the other presentations that have been made by department heads are for things that have been past line items, whereas this would be a new one.
But it's going to be a line item in the future.
Yes, but it has to start somewhere. And so what I'm saying is that, you know, if we start it not as a line item and then go forward from there.
And you can make a, I was just suggesting that maybe where we're meeting next week, if Mr. Dean could.
No, I'd like to do that.
Scrub. The wishes of the board, everyone?
Yeah, that's, that's totally fine.
Okay. We'll revisit this next Monday. But thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you again for last week.
Wait, before you go, I want to make a plug for the All for One, is it All for One or One for?
The All for One.
All for One Voting Station. I used it and it's a touchpad if you want it. There's headphones if you need it. And I was in and out of there, not coloring circles all the way down the valley.
Yeah, the touchpad is so quick. I wish more people would use it because I, I use it and it's tin, 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 and I'm out of there.
Everyone I saw, I told them, use that.
Yeah, it's quicker.
Yeah, can I do, the other thing I wanted to add is for people who are listening to this and the discussion about this, it wasn't just the A through L coming through. It's also the people who are going back to undeclared, the queue that was happening at different times of the day that what we, I'm assuming we still have two people there, and that would go much quicker and make their voting experience that much more pleasant. So thank you.
You are most welcome.
Thank you all again. Thanks. Okay. Next up, it's that time of year where we have an update from our economic developer, Mr. Darren Winham. Good evening, Mr. Winham.
Good evening, everybody. I am told that I talk very quickly, so I will try my best to take it down.
I have one favor, one additional favor.
Okay.
The acronyms.
Acronyms, yes. I got it. I'm going to try not to use any today, if I can. So I'm just going to run down the list. It's probably best, if you guys have any questions, I'll go slow enough. If you have any questions about any particular project, just ask me right then and there, if that works. Okay, so Ozram sold a portion of their property to the Kane and Company. Kane and Company is working with a company right now to sell Building B. Kane would then develop the rest of the property. But they would sell Building B to a company, I can't say the name yet, but they're a manufacturing firm that caters to the military. They'd be locating seventy employees here in the short term, and they'd add a hundred thousand square feet to that Building B and add another hundred employees. So that's the first one. The second one is Two Hall and Way. Colter Waters Charter School is open. Next one is twenty-two and twenty-four Continental Drive. You guys know where that is. If you go down Continental Drive, get to the end where the roundabout is. We're looking at combining twenty-two and twenty-four instead of having, building the one hundred and sixteen thousand square foot building that he has already approved, combine those properties and building a three hundred or four hundred thousand square foot building. So we'll see. We've got some people we're talking to on that one. Primrose Daycare is now open on Epping Road. Street is open. If you haven't been there, it's fantastic. Nurya Energy on Epping Road, we can see that going up right now. That'll be a gas station, a car wash, and a convenience store. Sorry, my glasses. Eighty-five Epping Road, Mr. Felder's parcel, which is across from Primrose, in front of the meeting place, we have a P and S with a bank. So that'll end up being a bank. Can't say the name yet, but that is going to go through. Our business outreach still continues. The Secretary of State's list that we, I get every year and I send out updates to all the businesses, that's going very well, thanks to Bob, of course, Bob Glawaki. We have fourteen hundred people on that list now. That's not all businesses. People are signing up for that. So if you go to the economic development portion of the page of our website and you want to sign up, you'll get all the updates I get to all the businesses. Let's see. Mr. Carlisle's property, there is a purchase and sale for a brewery, an existing brewery is looking to relocate on that site. There is a little legal and broglio, which I'm not going to get into now, but the hope is, is we get to finish off the Tiff Road, put that brewery up there, and move ahead. Mr. Monahan, Mr. Monahan's project is now going forward. That's going to be two hundred and twenty units, with fifty-six of them, which is twenty-five percent of them are going to be affordable. He, Mr. Monahan, last week put in his InvestNH application, which we're going to piggyback on, which I'll explain in a minute. But so he's looking for three million dollars. I spoke to the Commissioner of the BEA Business and Economic Affairs, and he was saying that the fifty million, people are getting it confused, I think it's sixty million that's going to developers. There is sixty million that was going to developers, but ten of those are going to the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. So it's fifty million, and the applications that they've received, the date was, has gone by. Tom got his in. But it exceeds the fifty million. So we're hoping that Tom will get the three million. So. And also, we're talking to two different commercial entities that are interested in the front of that. Now that they know it's going ahead with all those units, there's much more interest, as we thought there would be. Travel and Nature has moved to Lincoln Street. FH Con is the student loan processing company that moved to One Hundred Domain Drive, which is in the Stratton, Exeter's property in the Stratton Industrial Park. One Forty Epping Road, which used to be Palmer and Sicard, you know, across the street from Front Row Pizza, that is going to be a Ninja Warrior Gym. Four Center Street, which was the former Celt Building, the Southeast Land Trust, sorry, that is going to be a, there's a P and S, but that deal's going to go through. They're building it out now. That's going to be a hospitality management company, so it'll be office space. Everybody's been asking about the Ioka. The Ioka has been hung up with state permits, which are very difficult to get, particularly when you're, that's the only building, to my knowledge, that's actually into the river. And so that took a long time to get those permits. He finally has them in hand, and he says, his quote was, they'll be going gangbusters. So that's going to happen, happening as much as it can before the snow flies, and then they'll do the inside. There's a startup called Fat Hen Brewing, which is looking at the former Al Rose Shoe Site. I believe that is going to happen as well. I think that one's going to happen. It's a couple of young guys doing a startup. Twenty-three Water Street, I'm going to give you an update on that one later because we're talking to Mr. Elliot Berkowitz about doing something on that property because of the cost of construction is going to preclude him from building it probably for the next two, maybe even three years. So we're looking at doing something interesting there, and we're going to come back to you guys and talk about it. The mobile vending has gone pretty well. There was a, between our, our rec department and Scott Ruffner, they created something called Tomb Fork Tuesdays. It's over now because the summer's over. But they did a great job. And there's a gazebo out there, and, you know, bands and what have you. And so that's where the mobile vendors have been. As, as you guys know, that's what we permitted for them to be there. Very interesting company called Glareups. Glareups is a comfortable shoe company out of, they're a Danish company. They're going to put their distribution offices on, on Continental Drive, ninety-five thousand square feet. So we're pretty excited about that. They just received site plan approval for that. This is just like last week. One Cronin Road, if anybody knows where that is, that is the parcel that is, if you're going on Epping Road right before you get to the highway, there's a little road right after Mobile on the Run, there's a parcel back there that the state wants a surplus. And so then, but that means is they, they're going to surplus it, they're going to then sell it off. They'll offer the town, I don't think the town wants it, and then we'll just let them sell it. So we don't know what's going to go up there. We're going to help, I'll work with, when they have their realtor, I'll work with them, and I'll try to get us something we think makes sense up there. It's an interesting location, not very large. The White Apron, The White Apron formerly Bungalow Club is opening Mila by The White Apron in Exeter at One Franklin Street. The project is under construction now and due to open approximately mid-November. And we're meeting, I'm meeting with those folks on Wednesday. So I'll have more information about that, too. I can't say which one, but there's a New Hampshire Cafe with two regional sites is looking at purchasing the tavern as their third location. The deal is pending, but from what I understand, it's looking pretty good. So we're hoping that happens. It's a very, very good company. Gentle Dental moved where Olympia Sports is on Portsmouth Avenue. One Hundred Domain, that we were talking about earlier, was purchased by Torrington Properties for forty-six point nine million dollars, and wants to keep the existing tenants and add sixty thousand square feet to that, which is great news for us. I'll skip that one. Anna Chocolate created a reusable cup program, and she's trying to get others to do the same. We're talking with Seasons Corners Market to discuss locations in Exeter. I can't say where, but they're pretty interested in our market, and so hopefully we can get them. They're a pretty good company. Seventeen Industrial Drive, properties on the market. Auto Pizza's open, which is great. And finally, we did apply, I did apply for our InvestNH. And the way that works is for, for every, okay, say this right. So the state wants to reward communities that make it easy to put affordable housing in, just like Exeter. Exeter and Portsmouth and Dover and Rochester and Summersworth. And so as part of this program, the fifty million going to the developers, there's forty million going to a slew of different things municipalities can apply for. I applied for, Dave Sharple's applied for one for the zoning, and he received that. As you guys know, I applied for one for the ten thousand per unit of new affordable housing. So ten thousand fifty-six, that's five hundred and sixty thousand dollars I put in for. So we'll see if that happens. We won't know for a while because Tom has to get his, he doesn't have to get three million, but he just has to get some sort of funding through it, InvestNH, and I'm very confident he will. And then, depending on how competitive it is, we should get something because we certainly qualify for it. Did you guys have any questions on any of that stuff?
Any questions so far?
Yeah, I had a couple. First, on the One Franklin Street, that's not the address of that place anymore.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Just wanted to let you know because it, one was dear to me.
Do you know where it is?
Nine Clifford Street.
Okay, perfect.
I think it's nine.
Thank you.
So it's no longer in the historic district.
Oh, gotcha.
So then, on the affordable housing, the one project that you mentioned at the front, I don't know which property, Mr. Monahan or.
It's across the street from Mobile on the Run, that sixty-two A parcel.
Is there any assurance that those affordable units will remain affordable?
Absolutely, yes.
And how did you do that?
So when they, their approval at ZBA, I just wrote this whole thing out in the application, but their approval lasts for thirty years. Not only do they have to remain affordable for thirty years, they have to, they can't be smaller, they can't be any less, they have to be able to use the same materials. But you can't cut costs, you've got to provide the same for the affordable as you do for the balance of the two twenty. So that's, for thirty years, it'll be that way. And it's twenty-five percent of the project is affordable. The InvestNH, that's why I'm so confident we're going to get money, the InvestNH had to be twenty percent, and it had to last for twenty years. And ours is going for thirty and twenty-five. So we're kind of, and they want, they needed to make sure that we had a mechanism, and our mechanism is that, that was their approval. So they'd be, and so they have to, they have to, they have a management company that'll be telling us every year that we're reporting in, make sure that everybody, it remains affordable and what have you.
Will they be producing a report or something?
Yes.
Because this was a zoning board condition?
Yes. Yep. And it's, it's right in his application as well. I have it all, and I submitted it with my application to say, this is why, and this is the mechanism that we will use to make sure he does, he keeps it there.
Yeah, I want to talk to you later about the Housing Champions bill that failed last year, but I might want to bring back. It would be similar to Invest New Hampshire, but with a different kind of reward.
There is no more, no bigger need for economic development than housing right now. There is none. It probably won't be for the next twenty years, to be frank.
Thanks. That's a lot of information.
So I got one thing, if you guys are all done with this. So I wanted to show you something. So one of my colleagues had a point. Every year, us economic developers get inundated with Invest, excuse me, New Hampshire Magazine and other magazines to say, hey, please, please, put your town in here, put an ad in there. And what we thought was, well, everybody who gets that magazine knows about us. They know all these communities. They know all our contacts. And so my, one of my colleagues had an idea, and he said, let's try to go after some bigger fish. If, if something happens good that's in Summersworth, that's good for Exeter. Something happens in Newington, that's good for Exeter. Something good for Exeter is good for the rest of the community because we're sharing a million things, including workers. So he had an idea, and he went to the Patriots, right? And so this yearbook, right, this yearbook is available at every game, but more importantly, it goes to every owner, every season ticket holder, and it's in all the boxes as well. So we thought we'd try to go after some New England money and say, come to New Hampshire. So we partnered, it cost me, each one of us, fourteen hundred dollars. We got a full-page ad right here like this, and I'll show it to you all later on, if you want to see it. And we partnered with, here's the communities we partnered with. City of Rochester, City of Dover, City of Portsmouth, Town of Exeter, Town of Newington, Town of Newmarket, and Stratford Economic Development, with all our seals across the top and all of our contacts on the bottom. So we thought that was money well spent, and we'll see how it goes. And that's all I have for you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Winham?
No.
Home opener Sunday.
That's right. Doubleheader tonight.
Darren, before you go, I have to ask this question. How was that ad-funded? How did we come up with fourteen hundred dollars?
I had that in my budget. I didn't use it for other things, like consultancy and stuff, so I use it for that.
Okay.
Yep. Talk to Russ about it first.
No, I, thank you.
Yep, good.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Kristin Murphy with us, our Conservation and Sustainability Director, to talk about a program from Rockingham Planning Commission with respect to flood plan development ordinance amendments.
Great. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thanks for giving me some time tonight. I am here to talk about, hopefully you can hear me, a proposal from Rockingham Planning Commission. They are offering some technical expertise to us, free of cost. And what, what they are offering is their expertise to review our floodplain zoning ordinance and work to incorporate some updates that will basically bring into alignment Exeter's zoning ordinance with the coastal hazard, coastal, I always get this one wrong, Coastal Flood Risk Hazard Commission. It's not quite right. Coastal Hazard Flood Ris, ah, Coastal Risks and Hazards Commission. That's what it is. Sorry about that. But I didn't use an acronym, so maybe it balances out. And so one of their recommendations is to incorporate two foot of freeboard above base flood elevation. And so basically, what that means is for new development or substantial improvement to existing development, you would ensure that that lowest level of your property is two feet above the base flood elevation. And so that base flood elevation is set by FEMA. It's, you know, different for different parts of town. And so what it does is basically minimize risk for flooding. So only, you know, only when base flood elevation exceeds that level would your property be at risk. And so that is the recommendation from the Coastal Flood Ri, Coastal Ris, Hazards Commission. And it might sound familiar to you if, if you're not familiar with that report. It was also incorporated into the sea rise or climate risk in the seacoast report. And so, so, so I'm really excited about their, their recommendation to do that. Their proposal is based on something they've already implemented for the town of Durham. And so what they did in Durham was the base flood elevation change. But they also incorporated something different, and that's an advisory coastal flood risk area. And so what that would do is take the models that we have for sea level rise, and we have maps, and I can pass them out, hang on. These are just my mockups, but thank you.
Thank you.
So this is my version. This is not what ours would look like, but. All set? Yeah. So basically, what that would do, on your, on the map in front of you, the pink is the special flood hazard area. That's FEMA's established floodplain. If you see the dark blue, and you'll notice it only extends down to downtown, and that's because that's the tidal extent of our river. What they did in Durham was they used the sea level rise models and predicted where would flooding occur. would flooding occur up to a certain, a certain year. And where would that end up on the maps based on the elevation of the terrain. And so in Durham, what their advisory area was the area that in this, in our scenario would be in blue here, where if a property came before the town for permits, we would say, it's not required, but we would advise you to follow the regulations for the flood zones. And so to me, it's an attractive approach because, one, it's not mandatory, it gets us looking down the road. And it also, from my perspective, meets our master plan goals, which are identifying flood properties at risk, outreach to the community, and educating them about the flood risks. Yeah.
Just, just curious if there were any conversations about how that would affect homeowners' insurance if the town were to make that recommendation, if they're doing work to their house and the homeowner does not follow the guidelines that we recommend, like...
Yeah, flood insurance is only based on the FEMA, the FEMA boundaries. So nothing that the town does over and above the FEMA requirements would influence their, their flood insurance rates. And so I did give a quick inset, because in town, primarily the buildings that would fall into this category are downtown Water Street. And so you can see those buildings, some of them are already in the, this is the inset box off to the right. Some of those are already within the FEMA zone, but quite a few of them aren't. All of these are, with the, with one exception, all of these are existing developed sites. So it would take substantial change on those properties for that, for this to even be triggered. But even though it's a small number of businesses in town, it's our downtown, it's an important area, and I think it's a great opportunity to leverage some free support to get this information out to the public. The part that, that we would need to, just with any zoning ordinance, when you model after another community, you need to make adjustments to, so that it fits your community. Durham picked kind of the middle of the road flood stage, so they did four foot of sea level rise and that's what their boundaries are modeled after. That's what I showed here, but we could choose whatever this community thinks is appropriate. And so, you know, kind of middle of the road, or if we want to be more conservative, or more proactive, however we want to, we want to do that. So I'm happy to answer questions. I know it's a lot of new information, it's not really something that's been implemented in town. This process would, if, if you approve moving forward with this scope of work, this process would end result in a zoning amendment. And so it would be something that would need to be adopted by the planning board and moved to the voters through town meeting.
So I was, just Kristin, for clarification, I was confused. The, the memo indicated that this, I want to get there word, the project would go through next June, yet they were hopeful to at least adopt some language perhaps for town meeting in March. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, you did. So that's kind of their safety valve. Our goal, it's really tight to get a zoning amendment in for this year. And we want to be sure that we're doing adequate research. We don't want a bunch of, you know, concerned people raising concerns at the, you know, as we spring something on them last minute. So they extended it longer, but our goal is if everything seems to be going smoothly and, you know, it's being picked up and the community seems responsive, let's try for March.
Okay. Questions?
I do. How is this going to, is this going to work with what Dave Sharple's is doing with the Invest New Hampshire?
Yeah.
And that zoning project?
Yep, and Dave was in on the early conversations with RPC on this and is supportive of us.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
That was my question, but I just want to give you a little bit of historical context. When a lot of buildings in downtown, downtown Exeter burnt, burned down at various times and they were replaced during the Victorian kind of era, somewhere along there, it was decided to raise Water Street because of the flooding that used to occur. So it is kind of interesting that it's still a floodplain problem.
It is. And, you know, I mean, there are things that we as a community maybe could do to mitigate that down the road. Clemson Pond, to me, is kind of an obvious, something that we could change within the river corridor to expand our, our area maybe, but better to be prepared when structures are, are involved.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering about also, and this is a discussion for way down the road, some kind of protection that the town puts up on the water side, making it pleasant to walk along, but, you know, not a six-foot wall or something like that, but...
Yeah.
Just something...
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a slew of options out there that go the gamut from retreat to more aggressive hardscape. Exeter is actually very lucky. When you overlay the flood, the FEMA boundaries on our conservation lands, we have protected a lot of that floodplain corridor. And so, so I think, I think we've been very proactive, primarily through zoning.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
So I think this is an exciting initiative, yeah, good first step.
Okay.
Would you like a motion from us to proceed or do you just need support or...
Russ was looking for a motion of support.
He was? Then we shall give him a motion of support. So I would entertain a motion to support the planning department to work with the Rockingham Planning Commission to recommend amendments to the town's floodplain development ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you all, thanks.
Thank you.
And another exciting initiative. We have an update this evening on the Community Power Update and we have Cliff Senate here. Good evening.
Good morning. Hi Cliff, thank you.
Thank you for coming out of the bullpen on the acronym with the last...
That was impressive.
Yes, you're only, Cliff Senate, 84 Park Street, member of the Energy Committee and the Energy Aggregation Committee. And I am just half of the Lou and Cliff Show that you're getting tonight. So Lou is, Lou is occupied in Maine and asked me to, to cover this one. So wanted to give you an update, but also a look forward about some of the steps that are hopefully going to be happening. The last time, when Lou presented last July 18th, you made an amendment to the plan that had been agreed to at town meeting that CPCNH had recommended. Couple of changes, some minor ones in the text of the plan and then adding two appendices that they recognized the PUC was going to require when they review our plan. We didn't know at the time, exactly what their timeframe was as far as approving the rules that are needed, were needed to go forward. And they did that, I think, the following week. After that, the CPCNH's plan was to have one community submit their plan and to see how they responded to it before the rest of us. There are about 18 towns in various stages of, of this. And so the City of Lebanon submitted their plan and it was approved. And ours is, you know, based on a similar template, so our feeling is that it will likely meet the same fate. So at this point, I'm here, number one, to simply ask that you go ahead and transmit the plan to the PUC. I provided a template letter that CPCNH had sent us, I know you have that in your packet. I've also, just this evening, sent to Russ and Melissa sort of the final appendix, which had never been completely integrated with those amended appendices, along with the plan. So now we're, we're ready for that to just go forward. And then I thought while I was here, I would update you a little bit on, you know, what some of the anticipated steps are beyond this, so you know sort of what to expect. Because the pace of this is going to, at long last, kind of increase, I think.
Good.
So, any questions about the transmittal part of this right now? Nothing has changed in the plan except for a little bit of pagination fixing that I found needed to be made. Some formatting on a few paragraphs here and there, but otherwise it's, it's what you've seen before.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
So to have a look at this implementation schedule, this is based on a table that CPCNH has prepared, which lists all the steps that they envision being required by a community that, like Exeter, that is embarking in this before we get to the launch of our Community Power Program. And you can see we are at, you know, at the point of transmitting our completed plan to the PUC. After that approval happens, we're down, that would be step five or step six down there. And they, by the way, can take as many as 60 days to review and respond to the plan. The next event that would happen would be that we would request from the utility the data that we need to get on the demand for electricity. And it's fairly granular data, it's anonymized, no individual customer information, but it's a non, it's, it's demand information about how much electricity is being used by what kind of customers in, in our community. CPCNH has offered to make that request on our behalf, which I think would be very helpful because they know what, exactly what to ask for. Unitil has about 30 days to respond to that request. We can't make the request until we actually have a PUC approval of our, of our plan. So there's a lot of uncertainty about exactly when these will happen, but the hope is the plan would be approved no later than middle of November, and then we would proceed with the request for, for data. After that, there's a series of things that will involve your decisions. The CPCNH is developing a number of different policies that are required before they can become, procure power for the communities involved with this, including a cost-sharing agreement, energy risk management policy, financial reserves policy, and, and a rate policy. So you'll be, sometime later this fall, be, be getting these policies to review and approve on behalf of the town. And that's going to be probably the, the heavy lift that you'll, you'll have in that period of time. After that, CPCNH will be able to procure power. And after that, we'll have information about what the rates will be, what kind of tiers we'll be able to offer. You remember in the plan, we have different tiers of renewable energy content. And then we'll begin in earnest the process of rolling this out in our community, which would involve first, public information, mailing to all the customers in the community, notifications about the launch, including the rate that's going to be offered. We would have, of course, had to decide that the rate is good enough to proceed. Remember, that's another aspect of the plan that says if it's not better than the Unitil default rate, we won't, won't proceed at this point, so. So that's kind of a look ahead and if all of that works, then we would be looking at a launch of next April for this. Lots of details, obviously, in here that I didn't get into and I don't even know, so, to be honest. But things will become clear as we go along.
One question I had, Cliff, is when you get, when it comes time to, you know, the public education point, has the committee started considering different ways in which you'll advertise this or educate the public and have any other towns offered, you know, how they plan to go about, you know, public information sessions or...
I think that the CPCNH will help design kind of a generic public outreach campaign and we'll pick and choose among that and maybe develop our own to some extent. We did a lot of it in the run-up to the plan and at that point, because it was kind of a far-off thing, I don't think we got a huge amount of response, but, and certainly we could use your help in generating some of that.
Well, that's why I asked the question, because we're looking, we struggle with that with so many, you know, different public hearings or initiatives that we want to educate the public, so certainly working together, we'll do our best to reach out to folks.
That would be, that would be very helpful.
I have a question, Cliff, on number seven. Do you know what the timeframe would be for the request for the data? Do you know, would it be the last year, the last two years? And I'm not, I, I know, the reason why I'm asking is, this is your thing. I mean, I, I don't know how they're going to use that data to come up with the numbers and all of that, but I think, I'm not quite sure without seeing it, how much the usage has increased over the last few years.
It's been an odd couple of years.
It has. So do you understand where I'm going with that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So...
I believe, we had some very, very rough information in the plan appendix, looking at electricity demand by customer type, and that went back two years, I believe.
Okay. I just, I noticed my own, when I look at it every month, my own has more than doubled just for August, from last August to this August, so...
You mean, cost or...
Usage.
Usage.
Usage, not, yeah, that's staying away from the cost, it's just the use, the usage. So, just curious. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, I will add that I think that this would be a good way to partner with the Communications Advisory Committee.
Yes.
When we're maybe a few steps down.
Yeah, and...
In the ramp up to the public outreach campaign.
I mean, Bob and Exeter TV has been extremely helpful when we were working on the plan. We, we actually made a little film, a little ad, so it was...
Remarkable, aren't they?
Yeah, so we'll need more of that kind of help, I'm sure.
That's a great, if you start from now to talk...
Yeah, and I'm, I mean, I, there was going to be a Communications Advisory Committee meeting in two days, but it has been canceled, but I will put it as a note to bring it up and then maybe we can convene a, a working group or something, because I think that this is a...
Complex.
Exciting, and, but it is, it's complex and how do you get more people...
Right.
...activated?
Yeah, and I also think compared to a year ago, because of the rate increases, people are much more focused on this than they...
Agreed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, and more sensitive about it, so...
Yes. All right, well then I will, I can take that on. I'll take that piece.
Thank you very much. Is everybody, everybody familiar with the letter? Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion then to authorize the town manager to sign the letter to be sent to the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission, which would state the approval of the Exeter Electric Aggregation Plan of December 29, 2021, which was approved by the Exeter voters at the March Town Meeting 2022 and amended by the Select Board on July 18, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you and Lou and to everybody on the committee, Cliff, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Julie and Nick, who are representatives on CPCNH.
Way too much to read.
Thank you again.
Have a great night, Cliff.
Julie, I think you've, Selectwoman Gilman has some news on a grant?
Yeah, for $100.
Okay. We'll take anything we can get.
We have all of this paperwork. This grant is really just paying the dues for our Heritage Commission and Historic District Commission to, membership to the National Association of Preservation Commissions. We had done, the HDC and Heritage together had... We had done, the HDC and Heritage together had received a grant of $25,000, I think, a number of years ago, to have a two-day-long teaching session to help volunteers understand what they're looking at, or when they're discussing appropriateness, and not, I like it, it's nice, it works. And that was a great success, it was, I think, one of the first in New Hampshire that did that, but it's expensive, and I can't go for that grant every time. But we have the opportunity to look at the work that this group is doing and connect with other towns and cities about how, you know, what kind of things they're looking for, what are the tools they use. I think it'd be a great tool for the members we currently have and new members to, to learn the vocabulary, learn about, they have, every other year, they have a convention. So this grant is a mini-grant, it's called, from the Division of Historical Resources, and it just pays us back for the dues that we're paying to the NAPSE.
Okay.
So.
Very good.
I think all I need is a motion to approve the grant application.
I was just going to ask if there are any questions first, okay? Then I would accept a motion to accept the local government grant for membership in the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions in the amount of $100, and to authorize the town manager to sign any necessary documents.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman.
Thank you.
And that concludes our discussion and action items for this evening. We have quite a bit of work under regular business, though, so let's jump into that. Selectwoman Gilman, we have the, we have several solar exemptions and abatements, but then I think Assistant Town Manager Roy has some additional work for us to take up to this evening.
Yeah, I'm scrolling down to the, went too far. Sorry.
That's okay.
I went to Correspondents', okay. All right, solar exemptions. Mr. Chair, I move to approve exemptions for the following. MAP 63, Lot 150, unit, oh, no, unit, for $8,000 in the tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve solar exemption for MAP 71, Lot 112, in the amount of $21,000 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 63, Lot 72, in the amount of $12,000 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
And with the consensus of the board, I would like to group these next few things together, because they're for the same lot and different tax years, but if that's okay.
Thank you, yes.
I move to approve tax abatements for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 1,000, in the amount of 50, $550.40 for the tax year 2020, $534.58 for the tax year 2021, and $586 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 957, in the amount of 695.42 cents for tax year 2019, $992.71 for tax year 2020, $979.08 for tax year 2021, and $250 for tax year 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Hello. So we have our annual discussion from our deputy town, excuse me, deputy tax collector, and Ross, who's our town tax collector, where the board will need to make the decision on 42 properties, whether to take the deed or to do a deed waiver. We do have, like I said, a list of 42 properties, and then it's in the board's decision to approve a waiver or to take the deed. Previously, last year, you did waive all of the properties, so if that is the prerogative of the board, I would need, and I have our list here, we have the motion, which would be the MAP Lot Unit, and unfortunately, each one does have to be read individually, so you would have to do that individually if you decide to do waivers. And then I will pass these around, and each of them have to be signed tonight.
Okay. So there's 42, we could all take a couple, maybe, or?
Sure, however you want. So I'll put these, you'll see on this document here, it's under eight, regular business that gives you the motion, and then the, however you guys would like to do that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Want Julie to start, or do you want to just go down the, down the line? Okay. So I just have to read this for that, right? Each one?
Exactly, yep, each of the 42 properties.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deeding, is it deeding or deed?
Tax deed, excuse me.
Thank you.
Sorry.
For the property located at MAP 64, Lot 105, Unit 30, for the lien year 2019, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do you want me to just read a few?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed for the property located at MAP 74, Lot 23, for the tax year 2019, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligation or liability risk, or risks.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I'll keep going. Oh, fine, I'll just keep going. Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 239, for the tax year 2019, because in it, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 78, for the tax year 2019, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I'll do one more, how's that? Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed for the property located at MAP 87, Lot 14, Unit 21D, for the tax year 2019, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
B as in boy?
I didn't hear the question, so.
That's a B.
21B as in boy.
21B as in boy, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question. Okay.
I move to, what am I doing? I moved to waive the tax deeding for property located at MAP 13, Lot 8, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations and liability risks.
For all those years?
For the years 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019.
Second. Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I move to waive the tax deeding for the property located at MAP 111, Lot 5, Unit 7, for the tax, for the tax year 2019.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the tax deeding for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 124, for the property located, because in its, in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations and liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the tax deeding for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 228, for the year 2019, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations and liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the tax deeding for the property located at MAP 55, Lot 44, for the years 2018 and 2019, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations and liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I move to waive the deeding for the property located at MAP 58, Lot 7, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations and liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the tax deeding for the property located at MAP 103, Lot 13, Unit 37, because that, in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations and liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the deeding, tax deeding for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 309, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations and risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the tax deeding for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 332, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations and liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the tax deeding for the property located at MAP 64, Lot 105, Unit 82, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations and liability risks.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the tax deeding for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 222, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations and/or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the tax deeding for the property located at MAP 103, Lot 15, Unit 11, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Hold on a second, I'm initializing, so I get caught up. Okay. I move to waive the tax deeding for the property located at MAP 55, Lot 25, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Page two? Want me to keep going?
If you want, or I can.
Or you can hand it back to me if you want to bounce back and forth?
Sure.
We'll share it down at this end, how's that?
Yeah, I need to drink water.
Got it. Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 309, there you go, Joanne, for the tax year 2019, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second, is motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 387, for the tax year 2019, because in, in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move the tax deed for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 324, for the tax year 2019, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed for the property located at MAP 111, Lot 5, Unit 1, the tax year 2019, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed for the property located at MAP 104, Lot 68, for the tax years 2016, 2017, and 2018, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 15, for the tax year 2019, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Do more, and then I'll pass back. Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 378, for the tax year 2019, because in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
And Mr. Chair, I move to waive the tax deed in the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 182, for the tax year 2019, because in, in its judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And you need that.
I move to waive the deed for the property located at MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 180, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Is there, is there a year?
The tax year 2019, thank you.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the tax deeds for the years 2018 and 2019, for MAP 52, Lot 44, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the tax deed for the year 2019, for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 125, because in our judgment, sorry, in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
I move to waive the deed for the year 2019, for MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 144, because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality
the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes?
I move to waive the tax deed for the year 2019 for map ninety-five lot sixty-four, unit three eighty-two. Because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes?
I move to waive the tax deed for the year 2019 for the property located at map one-ten lot two, unit thirty-four. Because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes?
I move to waive the tax deed for the year 2019 for property located at map ninety-five lot sixty-four, unit sixty-nine. Because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes? Do you want me to take a couple?
I can do some if you want.
No, there's only two left.
Oh, okay.
I moved to waive the tax deed for the year 2019 for the property located at map one oh-three lot eleven. Because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes?
I move to waive the tax deed for the year 2019 for the property located at map ninety-five lot sixty-four, unit forty-one. Because in our judgment, acceptance and ownership of the real estate would subject the municipality to undesirable obligations or liability risks.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes?
That is it?
Thank you very much, both of you. Do you want to pass these down too?
Sure.
So we have one. We have a notice of intent to cut wood or timber?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the notice of intent to cut for map five lot one.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes? Okay. Town managers report. Melissa Roy.
Thank you for having me tonight. On behalf of Rusty and Town Manager, he's asked me to share the following. Russ has spoken with the deputy tax collector regarding Mr. Hamel's request looking at how late fees are calculated on water sewer bills. Currently, our software calculates it on a monthly basis. And we have reached out to the software company to see if there could be an adjustment to calculate on a daily basis. We are waiting for a response to them to see if that's something they can do. But we did move forward with trying to get that squared away. We'll let you know as soon as we have an answer. Regarding a status update for Swayze Parkway, Walter Mitchell has sent an email to Tom Donovan at the Chair of Old Trust Unit to find out that he has in fact retired and has been replaced by Diane Quinlan. Walter spoke with her on Wednesday to give her a brief update of what we need here in Exeter, what we're looking for answers for. And they have decided to set up a more in-depth conversation for Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, at which point we should have a better understanding of where we stand on that. Once Walter understands what her position is, he can file with probate court and follow to the next steps. Russ, the finance team, and myself have been spending a lot of time reviewing each department's budget requests, and we're working towards compiling a reasonable FY23 budget. Russ is coming next week to give you guys an overview of the proposed budget. And we also hope to come to you with an ARPA discussion as well. Russ would like to thank the Town Clerk's Office and the supervisors of the checklist and all the volunteers that helped make the election successful. It's a long day with a lot of moving parts, so thank you. Russ and I joined the Housing in Plain Sight Tour, put on in collaboration with the Housing Advisory Committee, which, Chair, you joined us, and Select Woman Belanger. We'd like to thank all the staff that worked hard on that event. It really was a fantastic turnout. It was pretty interesting, I have to say. And Russ and I expect to bring the ARPA project ideas to you next week.
Fantastic. Thank you for that thorough report getting back to us. I guess we needed a nice CMA meeting. On the twenty-seventh, that's a conference call with Attorney Mitchell?
It is a conference call between Attorney Mitchell and the new Diane Quinlan...
And he'll report back?
Yes, and he and I are going to speak on the following day to see where we stand.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. And thank you for looking into the citizens' concern on the water bill. We'll look forward to getting an answer from the vendor.
Of course.
Or the software vendor, or whatever. And I will, just to let folks know, watching at home, that Mr. Dean did follow up, and I believe you can verify, the posting for the DPW director is finally out and online and you're looking externally?
Yes, so we have contacted with MRI Municipal Resources, I believe it is, excuse me, to help us with that recruitment process since it's such an important position, so...
Okay, all right. And I think that was it for me. Any questions for Assistant Manager Roy? Great, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Select Board Committee reports. I'll start down here at Select Woman Belanger.
You were going to do that. Hold on. I was writing as quickly as I could, just in case it falls in my fur. I'm not done, so I don't want to mess with it. Oh, I'm sorry, just two more, and then I can pass it on. Bear with me, please. I don't want to hold up a whole forty-something signatures here. Okay, sorry, I'm ready. There you go.
I should have looked left before.
No, no, I only had three more to sign. I was going as... Okay, so, I have a few. Bear with me. Select Board Committee for my planning board. I forgot to say something at my last one, so just bear with me. I want to add, and that on the planning board meeting for August twenty-fifth, they had their first CIP meeting, and I forgot to mention that at the last, my last committee meeting. And then we had a follow-up one. And there were no issues on the planning board as far as the CIP. We haven't gotten a letter yet. Maybe we'll have it for next meeting? Because they typically issue a letter. But there was a motion and a second, and it passed. The town should determine the availability of federal funding in determining the CIP and activity and pursue funding and be open to the possibility of moving a project forward in a timely manner, should funding be secured, and that the planning board supports the funding for the parking study in two twenty-two-three. So I thought that was important. Also, planning board on September eighth, while Darren gave my warehouse Epping Road approval, so I don't need to repeat that one. That's exciting, though, big warehouse. And then Phillips Exeter was granted a site plan review to reconstruct Weatherall Dining Hall and renovations to the Merrill and Landall Halls and associated site improvements at twenty to twenty-four Spring Street. I did ask them to consider where their people are parking that are working on that site. And the second part of that, I'm going to say, for the site walk, is the Housing Advisory Committee walk. Okay, and then the Housing Advisory Committee had a meeting on September ninth, and it was final preparations for the Housing in Plain Sight Walk. Conservation Commission had a meeting on September thirteenth. I was not available to attend because we were at the New Hampshire State Primary all day, but Kristin Murphy, our Conservation and Sustainability Planner, did give me a summary. Julie, I'm going to follow up with you on a question that I had asked, you had asked about a possible public garden at the Rose Farm. And it's very wooded, and it would likely take substantial money to even consider that, but we did follow up.
That's the answer to every property we look at.
Well, that's the answer, though. So, and then Brian Grissette attended the meeting expressing concerns about the Grissette-Mendez property. He wants the town to trap beavers from the Little River and scam in Brook because he's concerned of the lack of trapping. Regular trapping will cause flooding on the conservation lands and his property off of Cullen Way. Typically, the Conservation Commission allows natural cycles to take place because of the benefits of the disturbance cycle created from dam building and breaching. He's concerned that the town has not installed no hunting signs. Kristin is working on that. She actually, there were some signs, but they were faded, so she used the marker as a black Sharpie as a temporary solution. I love it. And he also expressed concerns that the railroad installed two undersized culverts without proper wetland permits. And that Kristin's going to follow up with New Hampshire DES on that. I believe that happened according to what little I got to see of the meeting in about maybe last year or the year before, so I just want to make sure we're all aware of that. The Lamprey River Advisory Committee is seeking an Exeter representative. And they have had no volunteers, so if anybody knows of anyone. Let's see what else. The Conservation Commission agreed to keep their current hang cycle agreement at Rains Farm for now. They approved a few expenditures, cutting back on vegetation, woody brushes, young trees and vines around Rains Farm, and the mowing of the conservation lands at White's Meadow, Perry Irvin, and Morissette, funding for native flowering plant, seeds to convert to an eight-foot by a point-five-mile strip of grass along Cullen Way to a pollinator strip, which is, I like those ideas, and they collaborated with the Department of Public Works and Parks on that. Upcoming events on the twenty-fifth of this month, from nine to twelve, they have electric vehicle showcase on September twenty-fifth from ten to eleven forty-five, they have the Swampscout River Kayak. On October first, forest bathing. It's a meditative walk through the woods at the Little River Conservation Area between nine and ten-thirty. And on October twenty-first, sky watch, stargazing at Rains, and they believe it's going to start at seven. I'll talk as quickly as I can, sorry, guys. Planning board. The second part of that on September eighth was Dave Sharple's talking about his invest in Hampshire, and he came to us about that. I just want to, it's to look at housing zoning. We'll take into consideration our national, natural resource capacity, that Exeter has a diverse housing stock and wants to keep it that way, but we want to be affordable for all density. It's an accumulated impact, our infrastructure, what we have and what we would need, including sewer capacity, improvements on drainage, where there may not be any, no need to remove trees, what we could be absorbed without adding any more infrastructure, the cost and investment. And we would be reusing existing use and improving on that, whereas new development needs new infrastructure and the costs associated with it. The reason why I reiterate this is because this was discussed at the Housing Advisory Committee Walk. It was an Exeter community walking tour, Housing in Plain Sight, that was held last Thursday. We had a beautiful afternoon for it. Won't repeat what our assistant town manager said, but we thank you to everyone in Exeter, including Exeter TV, for coming along on that walk. We had approximately fifty people. Dave Sharple's, Doug Eastman, and Darren Winham were wonderful. Dave stopped at all of our stops and explained what our math tells people, and I really think we kind of... It did a really good job explaining. People were looking at these buildings and listening to the statistics, and their eyes were glazing over. Big deal. But it, I'll just leave it at that. It was very informative. The next meeting, the committee will decide what the next steps are. But thank you for everyone who attended, and it was rather rewarding after the last few years, what the committee's been working on, to see it every step of the way come to this, to what transpired. So, thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Select Woman Gilman?
Okay. Sorry. The Energy Committee met, and Select Woman Belanger talked, already announced the electric vehicle Sunday, Sunday...
Tomorrow.
I know. September twenty-fifth from nine to noon, there'll be a couple of dealerships there if you want to take a test drive on a hybrid or other electric vehicles. And there will be people showing off their own cars to tell you the great aspects of why they're doing it. We had an update on the landfill solar project, and the new bill that came out, the IRA, Inflation Reduction Act, has a whole section on energy infrastructure. And so we may be getting some money, or I don't know what, on the landfill solar updates because we've gotten more information from Unitil about our connection, interconnection with them, and it is higher than we expected. So the question was whether we were going to go forward on the town warrant in March for more money for that project, given that we had expected a return at ten years and turn at ten years and other aspects. But the data has changed over, and now we can expect a return of five years.
Wow.
It depends on what size of the array we end up being able to pay for. But to go from ten to five is fantastic. I also had a meeting with the age-friendly community group that was headed up by the Rockingham Planning Commission, conducted, finished their survey. There's a great brochure that tells you all the results of the survey, and what we learned from it was that people are not aware of the services that they can, that are available to them or can be made available to them. So the discussion next is about putting together a welcoming package, or an informational package anyway, of these are the services that can be, that are provided for transportation. These are where to go for various needs that you may have, that we can send out a notice of in some fashion. I think it's going to be, there's a sample in here, but I think it's going to be thicker than one page. So there was that, and then I think that was it for my meetings. The HTC was canceled. And I just want to real quickly go through what happened on veto day. The House sustained the governor's vetoes on HB three nineteen, which was the requiring students at universities and community colleges in New Hampshire to pass the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Service Naturalization Test. Also, the HB ten twenty-two, which would allow for ivermectin to be an over-the-counter drug. We sustained the HB eleven thirty-one relative to facial coverings policies for schools. Basically, what that means is that each school, because we sustained its veto, each school or SAU unit can make their own decisions about whether or not to be wearing masks. HB fifteen, fourteen fifty-four was the one that the House sustained, but the, no, the House overrid by a large margin, it was like two thirty-nine to sixty-nine. This is about the siting of new landfills. And they wanted to, the bill is to cite or prohibit siting new landfills within two-hundred feet of a water body perennial stream, anything that contaminants can leach into, depending, and it would, it's a different number depending on the kind of soil. New Hampshire's made up of sandy soils and a whole lot of clay, and clay is not as permeable as the sandy soils, so that could play into how far you go. The House overrode the governor's veto, but the Senate sustained it, so that means the veto stands, and we are, can be closer than two-hundred feet. And then HB sixteen twenty-five, which was repealing, trying to repeal the prohibition for entering and remaining on a public way or sidewalk adjacent to a reproductive health and care facility. a public way or sidewalk adjacent to a reproductive health and care facility, he vetoed that, which means that the status quo, the status quo stands that there is a buffer zone, and the House and Senate both sustained that, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Select Woman Cowan.
I actually don't have anything for. After we fill in all that? Your squeaky clean. The Arts and Culture Committee did not have a quorum, so they could not meet, and Swayze Parkway trustees are meeting this Wednesday.
Thank you. The River Advisory Committee postponed their meeting and will meet hopefully in October, and I just, for the sake of time, though, I really do want to thank the Housing Advisory Committee, I want to thank Exeter TV, town staff, Dave Sharple's, Doug Eastman, and Darren Winham did an absolute tremendous job working with the committee, it was a beautiful day to take a walk and see the different neighborhoods, and Dave really did a nice job explaining, it was well-attended, as Select Woman Belanger said, and thanks to the committee for their hard work, and folks at home, if you want, Exeter TV filmed it, and it's really worth the watch if you've got some time, so.
And I think our next step, or soon will be the map, that we did, because that's what was discussed on that walk, the numbers.
Yep.
And it really brought home what we've been trying to explain, so we still have some updating to do, because of course, tax rates change and the numbers change, but yes, thank you again.
And kudos to Mr. Sharple's for keeping within the allocated time. I think we actually had a schedule.
Yeah, because.
And we started late.
Doug broke in just like I did, so it was like going down memory lane, and no pun intended, but some of them are like, and so Doug was talking about conversions and different history behind some of the houses, it really was a fascinating.
Time well spent, thank you. Okay, correspondence, we have a couple pieces of correspondence, one's from the Federal Aviation Administration, letting us know that they're doing a review, undertaking a review in Maine, New Hampshire, and Massachusetts to support helicopter, air, ambulance operations, and then they have a list of different hospitals within the three states. We have a letter to Attorney Mitchell from the since-retired Attorney Donovan, which Melissa already talked about. And then finally, let's do a shout-out, we'll do this a couple times until the date, but Saturday, October 15th, from 8 to 12, at the Exeter Public Works Garage, will be the Household Hazardous Waste Collection. Okay, so with that, reviewing the board calendar, we'll be back here a week from tonight, September 26th, Mr. Dean will go over the draft budget, the Budget Recommendations Committee will meet, will meet on Wednesday, the 28th. We will next meet on October 11th, which is a Tuesday because of the Monday holiday, and also on October 24th, Select Woman Gilman's making me aware I was remiss in one piece of correspondence. Did you want to speak to this?
Yes, this was an extra bill that we considered on veto day, it was a new one, we had to open up our rules of procedure to be able to consider this. A while back, when we knew that the rates for electricity were going to jump substantially, the governor proposed extending $100 automatic credit to every ratepayer, which means that somebody in a $30,000 home would get $100, and somebody in a million and a half dollar home would also get $100. So the Finance Committee came up with a plan, and I did not bring the worksheet with me, but it raised the eligible, the eligibility for this, for this program to the 60 to 75% of median income, whereas now electrical and heating assistance is limited up to 60% of the median income. So this allows more people to get a rebate, and it's $200 on electricity and $405, I believe, on, on heating, whether it be oil or electric, and it's, oh, it's being handled by the CAP program, which frankly, I do not know what the acronym stands for. But it's something that people who are enrolled in that already, and that's anybody under 60% median, that has already applied for fuel assistance and electrical, electricity assistance, are automatically put into this program, the higher range has to apply to it, and they would go through the CAP system. So I just want to let people know that there is some relief for people, depending on the median income, and I think ours is kind of high, that anyway, you can apply for assistance, and it's a, this is a one-year program, we're looking to make it a longer program.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any non-public this evening, any other comments from the board? And seeing none, I will thank everybody and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, so move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we adjourn, thank you, good night, everybody.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is